This is your turn.
Please rise for the invitation by my favorite pastor, President Melon for today's committee.
Flattery will hit you every day.
He says that to everybody.
I know that. Let us pray. During this week, oh God, we're especially grateful for the gifts of this life, for our families and our friends, for our congregations and our communities of faith, for our work and for our play, for our neighborhoods and for this city. We come before you this night, God, ready to be your instruments, willing to work together for the good of the people of our city, and asking for your wisdom, your guidance, for this very task. Grant that what we do might be pleasing to you. Amen.
In the presence of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have some special guests I want to let you introduce to us. We have Marina Patacchi with the G Council. And we have, we have, and we have from 3350, from Halloween, we have Matt Sherry, Andrew Wilson. And we have Alan Sides, U.S.C. Charlotte. He's a state and a local government prosecutor.
Yes, sir.
Political science commissioner.
Yes, sir.
And he has to report. He reports to you in Chicago.
He's getting great. It's pretty easy.
That's debatable.
He's already learned how to be a politician.
You better see.
And we have a motion to approve the minutes, uh, membership. Motion by Miss Patton, seconded by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's carried. Motion to reaffirm or modify, I'm saying read. Motion by Miss Patton, seconded by Miss Fox. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's carried. Do we have a motion to allow people who want to speak about a specific agenda item to come forward and so speak at this time? Motion by Mrs. Fox, seconded by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's carried. Is there anyone who wants to come forward and speak on a specific agenda item? Do we have any items to be moved from the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consideration. Motion by Mr. Meisner, seconded by Mr. Guest. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's carried. Mr. Berry, this is first information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, express gratitude to the Hickory area director. Just wanted to give council a quick update, touch base back on your directive to explore the feasibility and cost of funding council meetings. Um, we've met with a number of individuals and started to identify the issues, uh, primarily related to this room, and function out of its room for a high-quality, uh, video presentation. Um, it's a fairly dark room, especially during the winter. And we're going to be making some adjustments with the lighting here that will light up the audience better. Um, did you know, we've had some issues with the speakers, um, and found out that we don't actually have the capability to plug directly into the video camera. And that's needful so that you have clear audio. Uh, so staff is in the process of exploring how to solve that issue. Um, wanted to chat with you just for a second about, um, live feed versus taped delay. A number of communities do live feed. They've actually built their, um, council chambers, thinking specifically of Calhoun County and the city of Lorr, to have the capability to push that out live. Um, we managed staff with our communications, they, the folks who would take a dedicated fiber optic drop to this building, back to their head end. We have not priced that. It would also take some type of a staff, not saying it'd be city staff, but some type of contractual arrangement at the head end, uh, and equipment at the head end to, to actually manage that as it goes over. So you have people's names put on there, you could show the presentations or up, et cetera. And that's very similar to how Lorr does. It actually has staffers who sits there and manages that as it's being done. Uh, so we have not gotten in, gotten into costing all those components out and we're moving in the direction of making sure that the room lighting is adequate, we got the audio capacity to have a good theater, um, video presentation with guys over toward Hickory and Hickory Island, Channel 3, and, uh, on stage's website. I'm glad to answer any questions. You can add if this is kind of spearheading that with, that helps me, Mike Davis, sometimes he works with some of our technical.
Would it be on TV when we have to wear makeup?
Yes.
Some of us. The, uh, it sounds like you guys are in control of the technical issues, and I'm sure that you're, and they'll resolve themselves with the folks that you're good with. What about the issues, as I say, relate to, um, you know, when it's delayed, what, how it's introduced, or what, what, what is seen on screen? I do think it's important that people be able to see presentations, even if it's taped delayed. And then you've got the whole sort of, um, uh, the whole tentacles of, you know, community movement, as to how we're going to do that, um, that, that whole thing. Is that, is that just a runaway?
That's, that's part of the discussion as well. Um, some of the things that we do know is that, uh, we think we can have it available for like Thursday, taking a Tuesday meeting, have it on Channel, uh, Government Channel, Channel 3 on Charter by Thursday. We haven't yet gotten into when the time slots could be, but we've had, with Andy's has a lot of conversations about that, if you know, we're going to get it out there as soon as we know it's available. So what we anticipate is coming back to you all, uh, probably in December, January. If we have technical issues that we can't get resolved with the audio, with the, with the complete recommendation of cut off the bases and the costs, and how it'll be permitted and all the details.
It is really a great place for airtime.
This is, this is probably the PSX studio.
You know, Channel 3 is actually the, the government channel with Charter. They have to do that per, it used to be per city, and county authorization through your franchise, apparently. That's been done away, but, but the requirement to keep public access and government access channels out there is still in the, the state, uh, rules that have to follow. So there would be a charge involved in that. And we would just have to get all ready to go out and there would be costs involved in that.
And then, and then there's obviously some staff time calls, really, that would be ongoing as it relates to maintaining all the way of the stuff, but in consequence, basically, we have to do that. Um, and, and we're, we think we can get, I mean, at least the council, I mean, that is the help that needs to be. And then, I realize that varies for, for, for times.
We'll have to have those discussions and see what's in those slots now. And of course, the government channel here in Charter covers a number of counties, um, so we haven't gotten into yet the issues of, we're going to cut off somebody else's meetings while we look at those kinds of things, across that bridge, we have that franchise.
Go on, Barry. Okay, it sounds like we're a little along on that. What do you think we want to inform to December? Governor Greer.
First and only public hearing this evening, I'll ask for the citizens' public service and the authorities, Mr. Greer, to come and talk to you. Uh, Mr. Greer, before the public hearing, is going to present some technical changes that need to be made to the city's sewer use ordinance, and these are driven primarily by, you know, Department of Environment and Natural Resources changes. And I'll ask, Mr. Greer, to take that presentation.
May I, I'm chairman of council, Mr. Berry, this is from, and I will say, you're a Charlotte man myself, so good to have you. The purpose of my presentation tonight, and I want to thank you all for letting me speak, is about updates to the City of Hickory Sewer Use Ordinance. Um, and these are required updates from EPA down to North Carolina. Just a little bit of quick history on it. Um, there are two federal regulations, and of course, two state laws and general statutes that establish a requirement for a sewer use ordinance. Um, and a sewer use ordinance, plain and simple, is really, is the rules that establish and monitor, um, how we run a sewer system. One of the big changes is, um, that's one of the reasons we're changing this, is because now it governs, um, collection systems and the wastewater treatment. And prior to this update, it was strictly the wastewater treatment plants. Um, so that's really the first big change. Um, but basically what this is, is those federal laws and of course, the subsequent state laws actually establish the rules by which we run the collection system and the wastewater plants. Um, and the sewer use ordinance really establishes the pre-treatment programs, which of course is how we deal with non-domestic, um, sources of flows, of course, as your industry, basically. Pre-treatment programs are established under the Clean Water Act, which was the sweeping environmental law in 1972 that came through. It really handles all of our water, wastewater kind of regulations still today, according to some of the business tools and modifications, but it's still a really good regulation that's out there. One of the big things that as municipalities that it has is those pre-treatment programs. Um, and again, that's basically established to help us deal with industrial flows or non-domestic types of flows. Um, and that can either be industrial, or it can be volume up to a certain number, 25,000 gallons a day, or it can be a categorical. Think of a hospital as an example of categorical, because they're not industrial. Their flows won't be high, but it's certain times during the day, different winds of hospital, so that gets you under a little bit. But you're dealing with chemicals and potentially blood and pathogens, those kinds of things. So that's a categorical example. Um, the City of Hickory actually established their pre-treatment program in 1982, and we've done several modifications as it went through. Um, but we established our pre-treatment program in response to building the Henry Ford plant, because that was really the plant that was built to handle the furniture factories and that style, those kinds of stuff around here. Um, currently, the City of Hickory has 15, and I've got NCD, or that's North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources. We've got 15 permits that are recognized by the state as pre-treatment permits, and then we've got one, what we call a local one. There's an industry that's out there that really, um, their flow doesn't hurt us, but it's, they've got one thing that kind of kicks them in, that we can regulate them as a local permit instead of going through a full-on, um, pre-treatment permit. And one of the other big changes is, um, in these, this set of rules is satellite systems, which are any systems that are not owned directly by the City of Hickory, but contribute to us. Longview, for example, is a satellite system. They have to follow our pre-treatment regulations now by these modifications as per the state law. Excuse me. The last update we made to the sewer use ordinance was in 2007, and that was kind of some cursory changes. A lot of definitions were added to it because of semantic ambiguity, um, and there were some changes in the parameters that we actually tested for the, um, nitrogen, phosphorus, those kinds of things. We actually started testing for a lot more of that stuff with our industries. Um, the intent of this update strictly is to get us and keep us in compliance with the federal and state law. We wanted to incorporate all the changes, and actually we have to incorporate all the changes that they made on the federal and state level in our sewer use ordinance, and also to incorporate the streamlining procedures. Um, the state has come forth, one of the, one of the things that we always had in, um, in the pack, and probably attest to this, one of the things that we always had was, any change to an application had to be sent to the state before it could ever be really looked at and approved by us, which takes 90 days. Um, through the pre-treatment consortium, we've argued that, that as, um, pre-treatment programs, we should be able to do a certain number of stuff here, and then just tell them we're doing it. Name changes, for example, if we changed the name, it had to be sent to the state and it would take 90 days. Um, so this, streamlining procedures are an effort that North Carolina's made to actually improve and, and help us to be a little more friendly when we're dealing with those industries. Um, North Carolina is a promising state with EPA, which means that EPA delegates them the authority to actually enforce the rules and, and require the changes and to make decisions versus them having to go to EPA to make a, a ruling on a, um, whether something's really meant that way or not in federal law. Since they have promise, we can actually do that on the state level. Um, so we're fortunate to have where North Carolina, Denver can do that. Um, the City of Hickory's proposed modifications, um, to the sewer use ordinance have been sent to the states for a, okay, please take a look at it, make sure we don't have any hiccup before I go to council, and then take an action and have to come back. We had them actually take a cursory look at it, and they're fine with all of the changes that we made. We also worked through legal, Ms. Gillis and I, and Susan McNeil, who are pre-treatment rapporteurs, sat down and went through this, with the fine tooth comb to make sure that we were okay with the changes that were proposed. The City of Hickory, um, we have to actually have a public hearing and adopt this ordinance or some version of this ordinance by December 31st, um, of this year. If we have a stalemate and we need to do something different, or council field, we need to do something different, we just need to write a letter to the state, let them know that, and they'll extend that date for us. Um, but I do feel very comfortable with the, the changes and the modifications we've made in the sewer use ordinance. Our goal with the pre-treatment program is, is to be as helpful and accommodative as we can to any industry that's out there, and I think you can talk to, to any of our customers and see that. Um, if there's room in our systems, we work with those. So just a couple of major modifications that are out there. Um, I will say, and I say major because there's actually 145 changes that are in the document itself, um, and 122 of those changes are strictly to go from one name and a title of position to another name and title of position. So that's, so there's a lot of changes that are strictly to get to where, um, North Carolina law matches federal law and ours matches North Carolina law. Satellite systems, as I've covered, is the main thing that's in there. Satellite systems now have to follow our rules, um, which they didn't have to before. We just had it through our contracts. Now we actually have it in this ordinance and in the state law, and that's all of our rules. Um, it establishes basic requirements for every application. Again, that's that effort for streamlining. We want to get it to where we can approve a certain amount of stuff here and not have to send it to the state. Um, a lot of definitions were added, um, to actually clarify things, again, stuff that wasn't defined before, it would just end there. Now it actually adds definitions. Um, there is an expectation of confidentiality from industries, rightfully so, and that's explained in here now, too. A lot of what industry wanted us to keep as confidential, we couldn't keep as confidential because of public records law. Um, but there is a level now of confidentiality that we have established that everybody sees and understands. Um, the, probably the major change that we made, and wasn't so much of a change, is actually just defining the way we do it, is the, the judicatory hearings. I got it wrong. The judicatory hearings, um, and what that did before, um, it actually was set where it could go to council. Now, we've got it set where it actually works through the public utilities department, and we make a decision, and then it's a judicial hearing if there's something besides that. Again, we're strictly following the sewer use ordinance in that. Um, so we're trying to make it simpler for the industries to understand, okay, we do these things, this is why we're doing it, this is the decision. Um, and our Nick and I talked about this at Lincoln when we were going through it. We have never had this come up, as to where they really didn't understand what we were doing, why we're doing it. So in 17 years, I've never had an issue of, of an industry really wanting to have a hearing but called, we weren't being, or didn't understand what we were doing. Uh, and also, the other big change was actually defining the water bodies in the state. Um, before, it just said, any waters of the state. So that could be a stormwater ditch, that could be Catawba River. Um, and there was a lot of lawsuits, we didn't have any, but a lot of lawsuits throughout Southeast as to what this waters of the state mean, because that's, that's a federal terminology. So the state actually went in and defined it as streams and lakes and ponds, and exempted any kind of weather dish, because it's not really a water body. So those are further defined. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. This is the shot of our new water base plant.
Are we held accountable for satellite systems following our rules?
No, we, the, the good thing about sewer use ordinance is really, it's not accountability so much as it is enforcement. We have the ability to actually establish those rules and say you have to meet these requirements.
Are the same amount of testing going on that the industry is responsible for, so many testings, and then the cities come in, so those have to change?
Those have to change, and what Miss Patton thought there is, we actually, um, as pre-treatment system, we have the ability to say, industry, you have to give us all the samples and we have to test this often. What we do, just as a matter of courtesy, but also just kind of a check and balances, we do a certain amount of those tests, the industry does a certain amount of those tests, and everybody shares those results. So we try to run a completely transparent pre-treatment program to where if you're Industry X, I see your results, you see my results, and when we look at the numbers, we, we roll them all together. So everybody uses the benefit of each other to analysis on a question.
Can you explain again that, on Hank's question? And that's sort of, I asked a question on that, too. The Hickory Sewer Use Ordinance applying to the systems that we're treating based from.
Right.
Longview's relatively heavy industrial area, I'm sure they've got quite a few permits with Sinsa. They, they wouldn't be permitted to the City of Hickory, are they?
Actually, a lot of the industries that are in, have you, are permitted through us, because they don't have the ability, they don't have the interest in running a pre-treatment program.
Oh, okay.
So in our, um, collection system contract within, we have the ability to go in. So really, what we do is, we work with the talent, and we say, we're working with this industry, with their analysis, with any kind of modifications they need to make, with any kind of help that they need, we go with them of that.
Well, I guess where I was, when I was driving before then, I think you answered the question, I was asking directly. Could there be a situation where we're collecting, um, the sewer from a satellite system, there's an industry hooked into that system, um, you know, in another municipality, and all said it affects that industry, and they've got, you know, they've got stopped production in the, in the other municipalities, saying, well, I'll get off to Hickory, and, you know, that, those kinds of things.
Yes, it can. Um, in extreme situations, it could, it could. Uh, I'm going to say with us, again, it happened in the time that I've been here, and I think part of the reason is because of the way our program is set up, we actually, Longview, for instance, we will call Longview and say, we're working with Johnson-Hurley, and we will go visit Johnson-Hurley, and if they have any issues that come up, our program works with them, and we try to say, try this, try that, to get in contact with the people they need to be in contact with. But ultimately, we have to meet the requirements at the wastewater plant and now in the collection system. If, if an industry is starting something that affects that compliance, then ultimately, we're responsible for the compliance out of the plant, and we go back to those industries. Again, we'll complement the industries that we have. We might have our issues with that, because we do enough testing and they do enough testing that we catch it and we start talking very early on. We don't let it get to a boiling point before we, before we start having a lot of issues.
I will attest to that. I mean, Sisam and Barry is wonderful, and we've worked very closely with the industries that, as he says, those testings are available, discussing in spite of anything they, or why don't we discuss what can be done back there.
Have all satellite users under our rule been notified or changed?
Yes. And, you know, those satellite systems really are Longview, um, a portion of Burke County that comes to us, Brookford, which actually, we own that system, account for the follow-up. Um, Alexander County has a little bit that comes to us, and, and the way we're set up, actually, we do that work for them. Now, we do it under them, but we'll go to Long, again, Longview's pretty much, and we'll actually go back to them, but they're working with this industry, because ultimately, if it gets to a, a compliance and enforcement issue, then Longview's the one that has to deal with that. But we try to give them and the industry all the help that we can prior to it really becoming an issue. You know, like you said, I'm not going to, but in 17 years, we've really not had that come, and we've had some pretty nasty industry type of stuff, but we've been able to jointly go in and work through it and not have those major issues. Thank you.
It's back. Now, the open of the public hearing. The body of the public here works is, uh, we give those to our opposed, to the proposals. Up to 15 minutes, we do the battle and come to the folks in those states to express their opposition to the proposals. They're 15 minutes. Likewise, advantage for those who are former proposals, and then five minutes of rebuttal and start the vote. I'll declare the public hearing closed. If there's any one question you want to speak, you can put it to the proposals. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the proposals? I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Thank you, mother. Second.
Motion of Mr. Guest, seconded by Miss Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. The motion is carried. Uh, under appointments, I would like to nominate Joseph Hart for Citizens Advisory Committee. Any other appointments?
Yeah, I was in conversation with Jennifer Helfer, talking about public art condition, and she said, I would really like to do that. And, uh, so I said, consider yourself, uh, nominated. Jennifer has been wonderful, sitting, done many different things since you got here, and very active, Clairemont neighborhood, but I'm happy that she's enthusiastic about it.
We have a motion to nominate this, we get nominations?
Mr. Say.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, uh, and motion by Mr. Meisner, seconded by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. It's carried. Congratulations, Mr. Hart. Uh, any matters not on the agenda? I'd like to mention, well, if you could, any general comments? I'd like to mention, we're going to get to a couple of things that have to be heard, too. Uh, last Wednesday, I was in Raleigh and moderated a, uh, transportation summit for the living in the Southies. Uh, Mrs. Yade Fox and, uh, and a hundred other city and, uh, and other local officials, uh, were at that conference. In nutshell, what we're dealing with is the needs for more miles and more lanes continues to grow. The need for repairs grows. At the same time, because of the recession and efficiency, gallons used are going down, and our transportation dollars have been determined based on the gallons. We talked about a lot of, a lot of things, uh, we'll just address that, but I think everyone understands that there are transportation issues related to our quality of life and economic development that are going to be critical, and that funding is going to be very important. So, uh, there was mention of a lot of things. There's mention of taxes on tires. There was a mention of toll. There was a lot of people who want a toll of 95, everybody goes down 95. There is a commitment, I think, in the state that if there's a toll road, there has to be a free dollar payment. So, uh, a lot of talk about tolls for new roads and tolls to use the HOV, how can this be in a way? So that you can get a spitting for your car that will entail you to use HOVs throughout the state, or, or a particular municipality, and you just pay one of the two. Lots of things being discussed, but it is obvious that just funding it through the present cap, I'm not arguing that on cap, but the present cap per gallon rate is not going to be enough. So that's one of the issues, a burning point issue the league is going to address. Then on Thursday or Friday, I went to the league, uh, the league board meeting. We talked about, we identified a, uh, 50 agenda items for the next legislature that we're going to fill to 25 at the meeting, advocacy college meeting at the end of January in August. Uh, some that you'd be interested in, there are 50 of them, I'm not going to go into all of them, but Governor Florrie, Governor Lekker-Florrie, the legislature, and the league, and others are talking about modernizing the tax structure. And some, some of that involves some philosophical things, some involves some mechanical things. For example, there is a desire by the cities to have control over, uh, sales taxes, the ability to impose sales taxes and change the rate. The privilege taxes come under scrutiny of being unfair, and, uh, that's what we looked at. I didn't hear anybody talk about it, but, uh, we're changing around a little bit so that service providers, as well as retailers, and factors, and distribution people would, uh, would fairly share that burden. For example, there is a desire by the cities to have control over sales taxes, the ability to impose sales taxes to change the rate. The privilege tax has come under scrutiny of being unfair and that's what we looked at. I didn't hear anybody talk about eliminating it, but we're changing around a little bit so service providers as well as retailers and factors and distribution people would fairly share that burden. And environmental, I have a few things on environmental. I would like to advise that there was some worry in there about air-based transfers and ways to make that easier. And I made a motion which was passed that would eliminate any talks about making IBP easy. And it passed. The city manager for a municipality, indigenous to Charlotte, voted no, leave it in there. Does that tell us further information about why we spent three years of our lives on this? Any other comments anybody has just now?
Well, we do listen to this. I made a point that ten and all four of this nurse basically, we should all be proud and be encouraged, you did a phenomenal job. It's hard to work up all day and then tack on these things, but what was so exciting about each one of those meetings, we had a lot of new faces and we had a lot of new parts were coming. And I came away from every meeting excited because I had picked up some new information, be it questions people asked or activities that were going on in neighborhoods, that spurred on the sense of place. They were phenomenal news and it was certainly a rewarding experience for me in an area that I can't stand, that I have a lot of knowledge, but I did come away from every meeting having one or something and it was very exciting that I seen all these faces. And I would like to commend the city. We've had, since I have lived in Hickory for 42 years, the most beautiful Christmas tree we've ever had in 42 years. And I think the event on Friday night through the switch was very heartwarming. There were families, there were children running around, that they were so excited about this beautiful tree and the yips under the tree, which I understand were a project of the grounds, they came up with that. Children wanted their pictures taken, there was music in the sale. It was probably one of the most wholesome parts of activities we've had in Hickory a long time. But trees, you haven't seen it, you must go. It's not Hickory, but sometimes less is, is there and it makes, less quite a statement.
I want to thank Mayor President Seaver. You and Ethan did that.
Oh, he had somebody else who decided on him.
Did anybody? I thought his grandson Ethan probably helped me. I'll thank them because I came to be there for the lighting and that lead meeting with all its 50, we spent four and a half, I almost shouldn't tell you, four and a half hours between 78 and 50. But it led out at the coast about 1:30. And I'll tell you, traffic back through Raleigh and the Beltline and then Greensboro and Burlington, Hickory's, it was tough. But I appreciate your coverage, I'm grateful.
Thank you a lot.
Was your grandson there in the box? He's a little younger than that stuff. Okay. We have two people who requested to speak. Mr. Jesse McHarper wants to speak concerning video taping of the council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, a view of your discussion concerning this matter, I'll give you a taping of the council meetings. I do not find it necessary to address that matter at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. And if you want to, obviously, you know, you can call Mr. Berry or Ms. Pitts or any of those candidates, you're right, yeah, you know as much as we do, I think. And Reverend, Mr. Cliffman, relax and speak.
Thank you. My name is Cliffman, 2925 Eighth Street Court, North East Hickory. Happy Thanksgiving to you all, first of all, and thank you for this opportunity. Mayor Wright, members of the council, Mr. Barry, President. Given the fact that this, I had prepared some remarks and I'll move quickly, I have two things really quickly. One, in the last, for the last few years, we, I've requested that a proclamation, and the city has sort of kindly done this proclamation regarding the Bill of Rights Day, which is December the 15th, be declared. I would request, Mr. Mayor, that you would have a proclamation again this year on that. I would also like to request that you consider including recognition of the International Day for Human Rights, also as a part, either a joint proclamation comes right together, it's December the 10th is that day. And just mentioned, I have some information on that that I'll give you if there's any questions about Human Rights Day and Human Rights Week, but those are two things that happen in December. And again, we, and I'd like to also ask that instead of the proclamation being presented to me, that we go ahead and present it as if you do it and let it go to the library at Patrick Beaver, where we have taken them before so that they can be kept year to year as a part of this proclamation's honoring our Bill of Rights. The other matter at hand is, and I want to thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for asking for the input from citizens prior to taking votes tonight. And I'm a little, I am a little confused and I want to get myself straight. I wasn't here tonight, but I've gone back to the approved minutes on this and as I understand, the reason I'm confused really quickly is because I'm not sure exactly why you all would have to make a motion and that motion is not on the agenda, so it's not addressing an agenda item at the time you made the motion tonight. Again, understand that I really appreciate, I think this is a good thing, I don't think anybody's going to abuse it and I think it's great to let citizens have this opportunity. Let me say that quoting from your minutes, I'm not sure why you have to have a motion every time or every week, because the motion that was made on October the 2nd was prior, quote, prior to voting on second readings, consent agenda or departmental reports, we allow any resident of Hickory who would like, subject to the normal rules of decorum, to speak before the council. Later in that same meeting, Alderman Layle initiated what became a rather extensive discussion regarding the previously passed motion, which culminated in a motion to have a subcommittee of the council study with staff and legal counsel, input of some which used the word uncertainties that you had about it at the time, he saw as potential problems which, with what you had passed earlier that evening on the original motion. That motion, of course, as you all are aware and others here are, that motion died later for lack of a second. During the discussion precipitated by Alderman Layle's suggestion, Alderman Seaver noted something that I picked up on in the minutes, quote, "It may be just a matter of rearranging the agenda, tweaking it a little bit so it does satisfy that situation to let the citizens speak before," and that's how you ended your sentence, I think you meant, I hope, and I'm not, I know we're not engaging, so, but before a vote. No one responded to that comment and your discussion continued. At the next city council meeting in October the 16th, the opportunity for residents to speak is provided for an emotion passed humanely two weeks prior was not extended. An individual concerned with a specific grant issue before the council was allowed to speak to that issue which is commendable, the opportunity for other citizens to speak and on other agenda items was not offered that evening and had not been approved by the council at its previous meeting. However, as Mayor Wright and I spoke about that, talked about that after the meeting, he explained to me that it's simply an oversight on his part in terms of offering it that night, which I accept is fine. At the council meeting on November the 6th, which was chaired by Alderman Seaver, as Mayor probed him, early in that meeting, looking first to you, the council, and then to us, the audience, he asked if anyone wanted any item removed from the consent agenda. As it has been previously determined by this council, citizens do not have such a right. That question was a little confusing to me as also not in keeping with the council's October 2nd action regarding residents speaking before council. So with all due respect, I applaud the council's action to allow citizens to speak. I'm very much in favor of that and I think it's going to be, over time, a really good thing that you hear input from us, the citizens, prior to taking a vote, which I think you spoke, several of you spoke very highly to in that meeting, that that was very important to you all. And I applaud those sentiments very much that you had in favor permitting citizens to express their opinions before the vote. But I would respectfully ask the council to address the point made by Alderman Seaver as to, quote, arranging or tweaking the agenda, unquote, so the October 2nd council action may be appropriately implemented in a way that we, the citizens, will find consistent, fair and clear in all future meetings and will allow us to proceed within the framework of the council's rules of decorum, which I think are very important as well. Now, I guess that's my statement on that. I was, the thing I added to it was, and Mr. Crone and I are looking at you on purpose because, because it seems to me that the motion, and I don't want to be picky about this kind of thing, because I think you all do a real good job with this, but I don't want that to get out of hand either. And so that a motion made during a council meeting to an item that's not on the agenda should be an item off the agenda, would be my question.
Well, my answer is I totally agree with you and I take full responsibility for what happened on October 2nd. I apologize to Mr. Layle. I should have interjected, interrupted, I had my mind on something else, but you were absolutely correct with the procedure. And if it's not on the agenda or if it's new from the agenda, it's an item not on the agenda, I will be addressed first and I'll take full responsibility for not jumping in and making that comment.
I just thought that was very important to do with keeping our things orderly and the decorum correctly as well, which I know is very important to you.
I think their capital R was a little R.
What is it? I'm not sure what you mean by that here. But, and I would agree with you and I had a general opinion for my speakers of the citizens, but thank you. I just would love to see this somehow other be on the agenda in a way that allows, because I understood this to be, when you make a motion, when you all pass something, am I correct that if it's passed as, I mean, you passed a motion, that that would be, and the discussion seemed to me that night, that that was a continuing thing? Now, you can undo that, as you all so rightly said, at any time that you feel that this is not, as you all said, a good exercise in democracy at this point, but would it not just continue from meeting to meeting? And I don't know if you want to answer that question or not, you can think about it.
We'll get back to you, we'll get back to you for the next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
I'm fine with it, I'm fine, great, thank you.
We'll get, we'll get back to you for next meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else who's back to speak? Mr. Happy Thanksgiving, we have a motion to return?
Thank you.